It is kind of so let's get started.
Say hello, get all of our ducks in a row before we head to public meeting. Everyone got the two correspondence that we got from residents. That's the most of, you know, we've mustered. I don't know if there will be more people showing up at this seven o'clock meeting. I would prefer that we, you know, to fill the time, we can have our own discussion about the moratorium that's gonna end, the draft of the legislation, which everyone has a copy of, Chapter 798. And Mr. Gelati was very, very nice to create this map for us today. And this is a map that shows where processing and cultivating can happen, that is in the purple. Processing and cultivating can only happen in G.I. And then the retail can only happen in those orange and yellow sections. But you'll see they can't happen within 500 feet of a school or a daycare or a park. So that basically takes off everything on 82 east of 271. So the only place that we could have adult-use dispensaries would be west of 271 there in the Commons area across the street next to Taco Bell. That would be pretty cool.
When we had the discussion, yawns ago, about the...
About medical?
I don't know what you wanna call it, the porn shop?
Adult...
Yeah, the adult.
Adult media?
And we got into the fact we didn't allow it, period. But we only had, it's so restricted, nobody did, and that's why they put that one on Route 8.
Right.
That little place that nobody's ever had. But it was a similar situation of looking at where we could and where we wouldn't.
Right. And this goes along the Ohio Revised Code guidelines, you know, this isn't even maxed, they're not allowed, this is state law for the 500 feet. It's not actually mentioned in our, in this legislation, the dispensaries aren't specifically mentioned, but I did look at the Ohio Revised Code, and it is in the Ohio Revised Code.
Well, they're meant, they're referenced in there, yeah.
But in the specifics about...
We incorporate the Revised Code in code.
Okay. In the specifics about locations, we just don't mention dispensaries 500 feet?
Yeah, 'cause we incorporate the Revised Code.
Because the Ohio Revised Code is...
The restrictions that are in there are the maximum of two.
Okay. Yeah. So that's another point, is that processes, so we already allow processors and cultivators with medical, correct? And Jeff and I were talking, and we were wondering if there's a difference between adult use and medical processors and cultivators, or are they the same?
They would have to have a separate license.
They have a separate license?
Correct.
Okay.
But they could use the same program?
Now, they kinda have divs on the licensing from the state. So if you're already operating a medical processing site, then you're kinda the first in line to get a license for recreation or adult use.
Okay. So we already allow medical, retail, medical cultivating and processing, and it follows these same rules here with these boundaries on this map. And then, so would that allow for two total cultivators, or can we have four, like two medical and two resi, two adult users?
Yeah, so theoretically, you could have double.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I have some information, you know, I did a lot of research, information I'll share when we're out there in the meeting. I don't know if any of you guys did any research, I would hope that you guys could chime in with your thoughts on it. What do we need to do, you know, we'll need to decide as a council then, when we're ready, you know, if we want this draft to go on as a piece of legislation?
Step one is decide whether you want a moratorium or not.
Uh-huh. Okay.
If you get past that, and when I say moratorium, do you wanna permanently prohibit all the uses? If you don't wanna do that, do you wanna permanently prohibit just dispensaries, for example, and allow cultivators and processors? Or do you wanna allow all three uses? If you get to that phase, or you wanna allow it, then the discussion is, okay, how do you wanna regulate it? Knowing that the Revised Code is the baseline, fairly clear the General Assembly wanted to preempt a lot of the regulations, but there still is some ability for the city to add some rules onto it. So what do you want those rules to look like? And that should be what the discussion is if you get that far.
Okay. So the other question would be, one of the places I think might apply would be the current vape store, you know, right on the corner of Freeway.
They don't qualify for dispensary.
Yeah, I'm trying to see if they qualify.
They don't, because of the district.
Well, I can't tell, because there's a...
They're right across the street from the park, so the park, within 500 feet of Veterans Memorial Park, they would not be allowed to open a store there.
But it's got yellow.
Right, but it's covered by the red.
Those reds are the 500-foot prohibited zones for church, church-like playground parks.
I'm not sure it would fit.
It's literally, it's like 50 feet from the park.
Mister...
Across the street. Nobody goes to the park. I don't know why, but it gets so upset.
Everybody goes to the park, just people eating their lunch. Are you talking about Veterans Memorial?
Yeah.
Just people in there all the time.
All right, well, before we have a further discussion on this, I wanted us to make sure that we do a discussion on the floor, so let us go out there, see if there are people that would like to speak. We will, Mr. Hoover will read aloud the correspondence that we got.
Can you crow in your own...
Good evening, and welcome to the meeting regarding adult-use marijuana. Will Mr. Hoover please call the roll?
Mr. Brandt.
Here.
Mr. Finley.
Here.
Mr. Graves.
Here.
Ms. Tully.
Here.
Mr. Ventura.
Here.
First on the agenda is public comments.
Mr. Hoover, would you like to read the public comments that we got via email?
Certainly.
He said he would.
Thank you.
I've received two emails, the first of which says, "Good morning. We are the owners of residential property in the city of Macedonia and wanted to share our thoughts on the sale of recreational marijuana in the city. We won't be able to attend the public meeting on October 10th, so I'm hoping that this email will be shared with City Council. I'm 70 years old, my wife is 66, and we do not use marijuana products on a regular basis. That being said, we are 100% in favor of allowing the sale of recreational marijuana in the city. We have been following this issue across the state of Ohio, as well as in other cities where marijuana sales have been voter-approved, and have found no compelling reason to ban sales within the city of Macedonia. To summarize, we would like this Macedonia City Council to lift the current moratorium and allow for the sale of recreational marijuana within the city limits. Respectfully, Michael and Ann Palomsky, 8546 Alexis Drive." And the second one says, "I understand that there is a council meeting this Thursday, and that marijuana sales in the city will be a topic of discussion. I've never voiced my opinion on this topic, but know that most people that I have discussed the subject with agree on the following sentiment. The people of the state have voted overwhelmingly to approve legal use of marijuana as a recreational product. To deny the legal sale of it in this community would be a great disservice to our residents. The baseless fear of marijuana is akin to the failed policies of prohibition. People that use marijuana will continue to purchase it, whether it be here, in the community next door, or illegally, just like in the days of prohibition. I say we collect the tax revenue and not give it away." That's Tricia Wintucky, 9506 Ledge Acres. That's it.
Yeah, and that was all the correspondence we had on it. There is no one here for the public meeting. We thought there was for a minute, but they're going to the HOA meeting?
Yeah, there's an HOA downstairs tonight, so that's where they're all headed.
All right. Next on the agenda?
Item number three will be the discussion regarding adult-use marijuana.
All right, so just for the record, we did discuss at our last council meeting that this meeting would be, this public meeting would be taking place today. It was put on our website, it was put on Facebook, it was put in the e-messenger for October, so it was well-publicized, and it looks like it is an issue that is not neither here nor there for residents. I was really, you know, interested in knowing what residents think. I do know that residents did vote 61% to 39% to pass Issue 2 when it came up, and it did pass in every precinct in Macedonia, so the recreational use issue is something that was favored by Macedonians. So the question that comes before council then is, do we want to allow adult-use sales, cultivation, and processing in Macedonia going forward? As I said, it passed in Macedonia 61%, and only passed in the state 57%. So we're a little more interested in the issue than statewide. Just so, I don't know how much you guys looked into this, but there will be, you know, regular sales tax, state and county, on sales. Currently, there's been about $80 million in sales in the state in the first two months. There's a 10% excise tax on top of those regular sales taxes. 36% of that excise tax that will be collected will go into the Host City Fund for the state, and then that will be distributed to host cities. The report from the OSU Drug Enforcement and Policy Center estimates between $300 and $400 million in tax revenue from adult-use cannabis. The 10% excise tax with the 36% for the Host City share will be between $10 and $14 million, and that'll be spread across all Host Cities for sales in the state. So, you know, even, you know, if our city were to give retail or processing or cultivating, we would still only get the share of the share of the share that is commensurate with the amount that was made within our city. It only looks to be at the top end about $200,000 in tax revenue for the city from that share per year. So that's something for us to consider.
Only?
Per year?
Per year.
Is that annual?
Yeah.
And does the school get part of this, too?
Well, no, Vinny, you have to, you have to understand, people are thinking, we're gonna have marijuana sales, it's gonna...
No, 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 no.
The schools, the budget's gonna be bursting at the seams.
You...
Yeah, I'm not downplaying the fact that it's 200,000.
No, I was, I was asking, and that was kind of a rhetorical statement, that the fact that 200,000 in extra revenue was quite a bit of money per year.
That's, I know, but people were expecting millions and millions and millions for the state.
Oh, no.
For the schools and everything.
My statement was, I apologize, but it was kinda like rhetorical, like you're gonna laugh at 200,000, you know, extra a year.
Right. People were just expecting more, so that's why I put it in the terms of only, you know, when I say that there's $80 million of sales in two months, people are like, wow, we're gonna make a ton, well, that's over the whole state.
Right.
And then you get 10% and 36%, and small percentages of that. So it would be at the top end estimated to be about 200,000 per year for the cities.
That's 200,000 more.
And like you mentioned at the end of your intro, it's also linked to how much it's generated within the city itself, or the local subdivision itself.
So basically, the report that I read came up with about 400, about 400 million in, at the top end, and then I just estimated, you know, over 100 different communities, that would only give about 200,000 at the high end. I do know that, just from reading online and people complaining about it, that our sales in Ohio, the prices are much higher than Michigan, and there's, there are charts that I read that there is, based on 10% higher and 20% higher, and that's where the 400 million comes in, if we were 20% higher than Michigan. I honestly don't know anything about the pricing or costs, but I do know that people complain that the costs are more expensive here. Another thing that you'll note online that I saw, there is currently a dispensary in Bedford on Rockside Road, there is one that will be going in, in Northfield Village, where the other, the McDonald's cake and candy store up there. I did talk to the mayor of Northfield Village, and she and her council were quite satisfied with the security measures that they promote with these dispensaries. You know, you have to be buzzed in, you have to be 21 or over, you can't even bring your kids in there. They...
It's like a bar.
Yeah, or even, even more than a bar, you know?
Right, because in a bar, people bring their kids in all the time.
Right, exactly. But that's not gonna be happening. There are, they're not explicitly spelled out in our draft legislation, but I suspect this is, also comes from the ORC, the security measures that they do have to take, they do have to be in compliance with regular checks from the Macedonia Police, which the chief tells me that they already do for places that sell alcohol and cigarettes, they do regular checks, so they'll do the same sort of checks on dispensaries. I assume you will do checks with processors and cultivators, just to make sure that...
I'm not exactly sure of the exact language in the statute, like what I'm telling you is like a deep-fritters, we don't even need a search warrant, we can go anyplace there. Is there similar language in this, Mark, do you know?
As far as the frequency you have to do it?
No, as far as the ability to do it, search for review, yeah.
But it does say that they do need to make video available, they have to have video for 45 days, they have to make it available for review. And another thing that the mayor of Northfield Village had told me, that the delivery to the dispensaries is also well-thought-out, highly secure, it's actually, you know, coming in unmarked cars, is very, very highly-trained people, you know, it's not like it's coming in a Brink's truck or anything like that, so they're doing the most, it's, it would seem that they are doing the most that they can do, you know, both to protect their business and to protect their customers, and hopefully that would, that would result in a very secure business.
It's treated like alcohol. Alcohol is prohibited under 21, you gotta, so they're doing the same things to ensure the security.
But you also can't consume on-premise, you can't consume on-premise in any of the cultivators or processors, or the...
Dispensaries.
Or the dispensary, yeah.
Right, but you can't drink beer anywhere.
Right. This, just to let residents know, too, that the decisions that we're talking about here regarding dispensaries, cultivators, and processors has nothing to do about the legality of smoking or growing in your own home, that is all at the state level, it also has nothing to do with the way that Macedonia handles traffic stops and impaired driving, that is all state-level rules and Macedonia-level rules. So that won't change regardless of what, and also where you can consume, you still can't consume in public places in Macedonia, you have to consume, you know, it has to be privately at home. Just one more thing that I noticed in all of the literature that I read, was that it was advisable to start stripped and loosen up later, which is kind of something that the state is taking care of, you know, the strictness of their rules, and I do believe that if the state does loosen up rules, for example, Mark, if they decide that you can consume at a dispensary, is that something that we could control later on, that we could, as a rule?
Not on a specific issue.
Okay.
And there will certainly be some court cases intersecting with home rule and what the General Assembly has done, so I would wanna give you a...
Right, okay. So it's a case-by-case basis, and so it's possible, if they loosen up rules, that we can make them stripped.
Correct.
Or just keep what we already have, not...
Yeah, I mean, look, my default opinion is, is gonna be that we have home rule powers, and we can enact what, you know, fill the gaps the General Assembly has not done.
Can you imagine, you know, you have certain places that have a cigar room, and now your possibility or the potential to have a marijuana room off the, up somewhere.
Better than on their deck in their backyard. I'd rather that, right?
Absolutely.
And then another point that we started talking a little bit about in the work session, everyone at council has a map here that shows where processors, cultivators, and dispensaries are allowed within state limits. On the map, it shows boundaries of 500 feet around every school, property, public park, church, and daycare. So none of those classified are allowed to be within 500 feet of many of those types of businesses.
Show the camera, so we can put the camera on.
Wonder what you were doing.
We might be able to put that online. The processors and cultivators are only allowed in general industrial areas, which is typically around Freeway Drive and Highland Road and south of Highland. The, the south of Highland's technically more than 500 feet away from the school. Then also, the, the business districts where retail dispensaries would be allowed to go are generally not going to be allowed, per the ORC, on the east side of Macedonia, of 271 on 82 in Macedonia, as there are churches, public parks, and daycares over there. So if we were to see a dispensary come in, it would be on the west side of 271, north and south of 82, and in the Commons area. The area, the smaller business district, right off of Route 8 and Highland, the northern half of that business district is in the, in the, within 500 feet of the school, so one wouldn't think that dispensary would be able to open there. The southern corner, that, it does allow in the Ohio Revised Code to make this, for the communities to make their own decisions about these sort of places opening up close to a hotel or something like that, and we do have hotels in that area. So, does anyone have any more, more thoughts or any research that they uncovered that they would like to share?
I would just, Madam President, I would just like to say that I hope we make a decision sooner than later, so that we don't miss out on some of this tax revenue if we choose to go that route. I mean, Northfield Village is ahead of the curve right now in this area, and it's just that, you know, response-wise, the only negative response I've seen is that we had a resident come in here when this very first come up and spoke, had his five minutes at the podium, and people I've talked to, the majority is actually whatever, you know, they're not for it, they're not against it.
Yeah. I think, I think people realize that, and what I've had discussions with people, too, is that it's, people are gonna, you know, this isn't gonna do anything about the rules about the legality of adult use. People are gonna go, be able to buy it in Bedford, they're gonna be able to buy it in Northfield Village, why, why not? Just, it's just, really just comes down to, do we want that tax revenue or not?
Correct.
I've spoken with the chief about it, and he wasn't really, he didn't, you know, he didn't have a strong opinion either, you know, he understands that, so, you know, I wanted to make sure that, I'm not saying that I have his blessing, and he's like, oh, definitely, Jessica, let's bring it in here, but, you know, he, from a safety standpoint, of course, everyone's gonna be trepidatious, but, you know, we also are selling cigarettes, we're selling alcohol, we have drunk people, we have kids trying to buy cigarettes and everything, so, you know, this is a higher, this is gonna be the highest-security retail establishments in, you know, in the whole city, so, so if we did have someone come in, so that might be something to consider.
But the people I've talked to, been quite a few of them, you know, they don't have a problem with it coming in, they know that we did the same thing with the adult stores, and we took care to make sure that we weren't placing things that were inappropriate. And so with this map, it demonstrates again, yeah, we're not gonna put something where it's inappropriate and highly dangerous. The question would be, though, if I'm in a red zone, does that mean I can't grow in my house? Or does that just mean you can't sell?
It just means you can't sell.
Okay.
But those red, the purpose of those red zones is to show where they overlap what the general industrial and business districts, and even if you're within one of those districts, if you're in a building that has a residential use, that's an additional prohibition. So you could be in a G.I., but if somebody is making residential use out of that building that's in B.I., then you can't have a recreational use go in there as well.
And if we don't take action before the end of the year, what happens? Because does not our current expire?
Yeah, so our moratorium would expire, and I would encourage you to make some type of decision, even if it's to extend the moratorium, when you're, you know, you're already towards the top end of the moratorium, but let's say you did nothing, then you'd just be left with the state law.
So it's to our advantage to do this before the end of the year, so we can settle it, and, I mean, we only have three more meetings.
Right. So the December meeting, I think, is on the 12th, and our moratorium ends on the 14th, I think, so it's pretty close.
Oh, that's timely.
Yeah, exactly. And other cities did do, I mean, there's a lot of cities that did moratoriums, many of them did two years, so they gave themselves, so basically, they're waiting to see what other cities are getting for revenues. Speaking of which, I did reach out to the finance director of Bedford, and they, you know, were not able to come up with any revenue numbers, just because the quarter didn't end, so they didn't get anything, and they didn't have any projections whatsoever. So the only numbers I have are from this Ohio State study. So can we make some sort of motion tonight, Mark, at this meeting, to decide what we would like to do going forward? What is our next step?
I would say, maybe you wanna do that under new business and the regular...
Okay, in the regular meeting. And our options are to, I mean, you had told us that option.
Yeah, so basically...
There were, there were many of them.
Yeah, so step, step one, is there gonna be a prohibition or not?
Okay.
And in the prohibition respect, you basically have three things you can prohibit: dispensary use, cultivator use, and processing use. So you could prohibit all three, you could prohibit one of them, allow two, prohibit two, allow one, so, you know, what do you wanna do in that for step? And then if there are some of those uses you wanna allow, then the discussion is, how do you want to regulate it? And so, you know, you need to decide what you're gonna allow first, if anything.
So shall we craft a motion and then vote on that motion? Because I, I don't know how we discuss and then move to get to where you're... Because I, I don't know how we discuss and then move to get to where you're saying, you know, can I? How do we discuss and decide whether or not we're going to decide to prohibit? Or whether or not we're going to decide to extend the moratorium? You know, that, that, that needs to go to a vote, right?
Yeah, I mean, you could open the floor up to each member to provide their comments on it. And then, you know, you can do, somebody can make a motion if they wanted to say, you know, I moved to permanently prohibit all three uses, you could vote on that. If you want to have a motion to prohibit, you know, cultivating use and allow the others, commit a motion for that. But usually it's based on the discussion and input from all the members in the debate board.
So if we were to go ahead and decide that we would like to move forward with a vote to pass this, the ordinance, or to add this, to, to make this draft into law.
If you want me to draft ordinance that contains the sample legislative, the sample code chapter I put together, you could do, any one of you could instruct me to do that and that would be available at your next meeting.
And what?
You don't need a vote for that.
What if that, we do that and it comes down to December 12th and we vote that down? So then, then we're kind of screwed.
Then you would be looking at potentially extending the moratorium.
Okay.
Or, or state law would prevail on the 14th.
Or state law would prevail.
Which would make it legal.
Right.
Yeah, and you would lose a little bit of opportunity to, you know, regulate locally.
Right.
For the least a period of time.
Can I give a little bit of my input on this? So I, I sat on council when this first came up. I don't know if you were here at that time.
A while ago.
But we did have, I think we still have some things on the books, but what I remember at that time was there was like the 500 foot restriction. Well, we, we doubled that. And looking at this map, what, what I would strongly suggest, the high school is, is right on that brink. And, and whether we want to admit it or not, there's going to be an odor that comes from these types of facilities.
Yeah.
Hold on.
It'll be next to our house or straight away.
Well, you know, if you're at a football game, do, do you really want the scent of marijuana flowing through it? You know, I, I just started to look at the map and think about that. Like, my suggestion would be it's 500 is the rule, but we can make that 1,000. And that gets that away from the high school, but still gives you the ability to put it in other areas. I'm just apprehensive with it being that close to the high school. Because I did speak with someone, they did say, you know, you do catch that scent. And, and it kind of sends the wrong message, I think, for the, for the kids at the school. I know there's some issues with some of that at the school, you know, where there's, kids are getting their hands on this stuff sometimes. And I would rather not encourage people that are underage to consume. So my thought would be make it 1,000 feet, get it away from the high school.
I'll take and make a motion that we change that distance and make it 1,000 feet and for the health and safety.
I don't think we can do that right now.
We're not doing that.
Can't do that now?
We're not in a meeting.
No, we got to put the whole thing together.
We're just in a discussion.
We're talking.
But I would suggest just schools. I agree with what you say about how close this high school is to the, the industrial and also the high school is about to extend into, you know, closer to Highland, all the way down to Highland. So that might make, you know, if we do 1,000 and then off time, that really gets rid of a chunk of where it's, who would be available and that would help keep it away from the school area. I have, I have no problem with that. We can differentiate between schools and daycares, yes? Or no, we can, you know, we can do, we can say processing has to be 1,000 feet away from schools, which would keep it away from the high school and then not touch dispensaries, which, you know, wouldn't, wouldn't cause a problem with the existing distances.
So you'd want to separate the distance?
Just for cultivators and processors have to be 1,000 feet away from those things that, that are mentioned in the ordinance, but keep dispensaries within 500. Because as we can see by this map, the dispensaries are, we wouldn't want to cut into more of the available retail space, which isn't that much anyway. That would be my recommendation based on what the mayor suggested. Excellent suggestion.
Well, if you look at the map, if you just, let's just say you did 1,000 everywhere, I don't think you're really affecting much other than the high school area and fun stuff.
Right.
Because most of the other, the purple areas are the only areas that you can, in fact, put it in.
Those are in.
So if you made a thousand.
Right, but I'm talking, I'm talking about the dispensary. So if we did dispensary for 1,000, that would extend like across 271. So I'd say if this, if this went into 1,000, then that would cut off some of that retail space.
But you still have a childcare place. That's what I'm alluding to as well. Because if you look at the map, so this is 500 foot from the building, it's just going to extend. So it's going to cut it out to there as opposed to the whole thing.
Right, right. But I'm talking about, I'm just talking about maybe if someone wanted to set up shop there that they were able to.
What, what is the measuring distance? Is it the building or the property edge?
It's the building.
Okay. For all three?
Yeah, uh, yeah. No, I looked it up.
But we have it provisioned in our local code and I thought it was a property boundary.
Because there's some property that the school district bought that's on.
Yeah, that's, but that doesn't. Right, but it doesn't count now because from what I read in the, the ORC, it was the actual building. Not the, not the property lines.
I, I have an idea, just in terms of process of how we pursue. I guarantee there are people out there that have no idea we're having this discussion tonight. I would recommend that whatever we have in the form of legislation, we introduce it at our next meeting. And we do three readings. And we, that gives us an opportunity to do it by the 12th, which gets us in before the 14th.
Right.
And it gets the public, not only the public opportunity to come in and say, oh, I didn't know you guys have been talking about this for two months, but also it gives us the opportunity to take whatever we put in on first read in two weeks and keep doing little piecemeal adjustments like what the mayor brought up, right? It gives us the greatest opportunity to do it right the first time while also giving the public the greatest typical opportunity to come in for three readings.
Mark, do you recall, I'm sorry, did you recall when we did this before, was it, what was the distance? I think it was 1,500 feet, wasn't it? I think it was pretty, it was fairly vast.
I don't think it was.
Sorry, I didn't interrupt you.
No, I, I just wondered when, when this came up the first time, did we not set up the distance in legislation prior to this?
Right. So this existing, this legislation that we have in this draft is the same legislation as medical, correct?
Not the same, no, it's modified.
It's modified, but the distances and the locations is the same as.
Those were modified somewhat as well. That's why I don't want to give you a complete answer.
Okay.
Okay, that's what I wasn't sure about. I thought that was already set in stone at this time about the distance.
No, no, nothing's set in stone. This, I mean, really, you guys are on that draft resolution to give you something to talk about essentially.
Right.
Because I don't think anybody had given any actual direction that this is a regulation, council's interested in it.
Right.
So you guys basically give me the specifics that you're looking for, you know, I'll tell you if you can do it or you can't do it, if you decide to regulate instead of prohibit.
Well, I would like to ask every council member to please give their opinion, and this is something we can do at this meeting, Mark, right, to give our opinion of what we would like to do official, make a motion on in the meeting.
Well, like I said, if you, if it's as simple as you just want me to put an ordinance together with the draft chapter.
We should ask for it.
But I wanted, I wanted to get the opinion of everyone. I want to, I want to know if anyone thinks that we should just go ahead and extend the moratorium, if anyone is super against voting on it, or if we all happen to be in favor of going ahead with this legislation and getting it passed, if we decide to pass it by December 12th. So I, I would like to ask for everyone's input on that. So I would give my, what I would like to do going forward is take this draft legislation and go ahead and start making amendments to it with the idea of voting on it at the December 12th meeting. I like the idea of getting more input from the residents and people hearing what we had to say here. And us, but not extending the moratorium. So, so that's where I'm at. I'd like to get to a resolution so that we can vote on whether or not we would like to have adult use processing, cultivating, and, and dispensaries here in Macedonia.
So to answer the question, the stat, the post statutory language would be 500 feet of the end boundaries of a parcel of real estate having situated on it, the private facility. So is the property line.
The property line. So the property that the school district bought that I think.
That's three different, I understand. We can start after, we don't have to.
I think that property would potentially change your borders, because I think they bought some property closer to Highland.
But the property also is three different parcels and none of them have, have school on them. So they happen to be owned by the school, but they don't have school on them. So that might, that might be something. Mr. Garvis, how do you feel that you would like to take this?
I am not firmly opposed or in favor. I think I came here tonight wanting to soak in as much information as I could from everybody. I'm a very big advocate of the fact that we have had a moratorium for almost a calendar year at this point, right?
Yeah.
I would hate for us to just make a knee jerk reaction and pass something on three readings as an emergency just to do it. I would prefer that we do that opportunity where we take the three meetings that we have for the remainder of the year, talk through it, learn everything we might learn. I, I didn't even consider what you brought up tonight. I think it's an excellent point. So that's why I'd like to use that time. We can introduce some version of this for first reading at the next meeting. And I think by the 12th, we'll have something that the five of us can vote on.
So you're not interested in extending the moratorium at this time?
I don't believe.
Unless there's something that we just can't get this.
Right, right. And, or unless like, you know, at a future meeting, a whole bunch of people come in and completely sway me in that direction, I don't.
I'd like to hear Mark's thoughts. Mr. Finley, what are your thoughts?
I'm in the same viewpoint as you are.
All right. So you, you're interested, you're not interested in extending the moratorium? You'd like to go forward, get this wrapped up and get voting on a legislation by December 12th. Ms. Tully?
I agree. We don't extend the moratorium. Most of the people I've asked, they don't have a problem with it yet. They believe it's become our right based on the vote that was taken and we need to obey the right. So what we did, and I keep using the example of the adult stores, we don't get any complaints because of what we did in putting in, you can't have it by a school, you can't have it by a church. So I have no problem. I think we need to move forward.
Mr. Ventura?
I concur with you.
All right.
Can I make one point?
Absolutely.
Just for consideration purposes, and, and Mark, I don't know if this would be best drawn up as a potential amendment that we could vote on, or if it's something council would prefer to just put right into the ordinance. But I am interested in us looking at potentially putting in some type of restrictions around the hotels.
Yeah, that's, that's something that we have the right to do through the state. So, yeah, I agree. There's not that many hotels, it's not going to get rid of a chunk of opportunities. So.
What, what would be your reasoning, sir?
It's just a thought to discuss further. I don't really, because somebody brought it up.
If you purchase from a dispensary, you have hotels to smoke it outside or something, you know.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone. I thought this was a great meeting. It was a good discussion. We got some good ideas. Thank you, Mayor.
I'll make a motion for adjournment.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Hello and welcome to the October 10th, 2024 council meeting. It is 7:32 PM. Will Mr. Hoover please call the roll?
Here. Mr. Finley?
Here.
Mr. Garvis?
Here.
Ms. Tully?
Here.
Mr. Ventura?
Here.
Now I ask Chaplain O'Brien to leave us in the invocation and the pledge.
Just to give you a brief update, Ramirez just hit a homerun that scores two to one.
Yes.
Good evening, Your Honor, members of council, distinguished guests. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you this evening as we address issues affecting our community. It is vital that we continue to work together to ensure that our city thrives, meeting the needs of all residents while fostering a safe and inclusive environment. From infrastructure improvements to community programs, we must continue to make thoughtful decisions that positively impact our city's future. I would like to take a moment to recognize the invaluable service provided by our fire department. These brave men and women put their lives on the line day and night to protect our community, responding to emergencies with speed, professionalism, and unwavering dedication. Their commitment to safeguarding the well being of our residents is truly inspiring, and we are deeply grateful for the sacrifices they make to keep us safe. Today, we honor their courage and extend our heartfelt thanks for their tireless service. Amen? And now the Honorable Mayor Nick Molnar will lead us in our pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chaplain. Appreciate you. Okay, next on our agenda is the approval of minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for Thursday, September 26, 2024, regular council meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Public comments? I'm assuming we have none since I don't see anyone. Correspondence from the clerk?
None, sir.
Pending a new legislation, we have none, any motions or legislative actions.
Do believe.
Are we going right down, we're going right down to put the phones down?
Yeah. We don't, we don't need to make, you know, I can just ask you to do that decision. Okay. So we're all set on that and everything we discussed and that.
I will, I will do that based on the.
All right, thank you.
Okay, then I'll go into the mayor's report. I'm very honored to present today, this will go into the rec center. I'm very proud of our Parks and Recreation staff for winning another national gold medal award. Pretty cool stuff. It says finalist national gold medal award in the field of Parks and Recreation Management. Presented to, presented by the American Academy for Park and Recreation Administration in partnership with the National Recreation and Park Association Class V 2024, City of Macedonia, Parks and Recreation. I think my report goes all to them. So, good job. And don't drive distracted. Put the phones down, drive your car. Committee reports.
Parks and Rec Commission meets next Wednesday at 6:00 PM upstairs at the rec center. And I just want to reiterate for the mayor how proud I am of our department for once again being in the top four in the nation for cities under 30,000 for recreation. The recreation department is just completely different. You know, we've always had a good recreation department, but now we have an outstanding recreation department. And once again, I'll thank the residents because that starts with you, that's something that we, we voted on to keep funding the recreation department. And you're starting to see some of the fruits of that. You know, we got the boring old roads and, you know, HVAC and all stuff like that. But this, what you're seeing with the recreation department is both a combination of the amazing people that are working there and doing great work and the, the great hiring that the, that the mayor was able to do, but also the funding that residents were approved to keep the recreation center and the parks running. And also our finance director has done a fantastic job managing money to, to get all these projects done. And Parks and Rec Commission is just very excited with all the projects that we, you know, we, we talk about in every meeting, we have projects that we've been talking about for years and years, way before Director Chaddick got there. You know, some of our members have been on for over 10 years and there's just stuff that we're able to do now. And it's just amazing to see what they're able to do with what they have and what they've gotten from the voters. So thank you to the residents, thank you to the staff and the director of the Parks and Rec Department. And from, you know, from, from the bottom of my heart and the Parks and Rec Commission, we thank you and congratulate you on that award. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you.
Yes, I would like to announce that the finance committee will meet again on October 24th. Time to be determined by Madam President's setting up of the agenda. And we will be discussing, that will be our first discussion on the 2025 operating budget.
Thank you. Okay, department reports. Chief Ripley.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Yakupowicz would like me to say no report. But this is fire prevention week, so I can't say no report. Sorry, Vince. This is fire prevention week. We had our open house last night. Most of you were there. It was a great event. We sworn some additional firefighters. So the community knows, these are people who were hired throughout the year and it's a ceremony, their families come, community comes. We had food trucks and I think it was a good time for all that attended. The weather held out, little chilly, but it was still nice. On a sombering note, Fire Prevention Week started with a weekend where there were seven fire deaths in the state of Ohio. So it's something that's real and something we have to pay attention to. And we have a very good track record in our community because of diligence of our residents and the work we do in fire prevention. So thoughts go out to those families, the lost loved ones, and do diligence in preventing fires. End of report, Mayor.
Thank you. Chief Yakupowicz.
No report, Mayor.
Director Gaddetti?
No report, sir.
Any unfinished business? Any new business?
I'd just like to.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make an announcement that at the VFW in Northfield this weekend, on Saturday from 10 to 2 o'clock, there will be a bus from Sub Zero. It's a veteran or veteran owned run organization that collects hats, gloves, new socks, tents, and sleeping bags to stuff the bus to help with homeless veterans and homeless across Ohio and the area. So that is at the VFW from 10 to 2. If you've added anything.
So that is at the VFW, from 10 to 2, if you've had anything gently-used coats, or sleeping bags, or anything like that, if you could please come donate, that would be appreciated.
Yes, I would like to inform City Council and residents that I am working on a project that I have researched for quite some time already, to change and amend some of the building and zoning ordinances and codes. I am on the agenda for the Planning Commission on the 21st, and I would like anybody that would have input, right now, the, the project name is all about fencing and fences. So that's what I'm working on, I will be presenting my ideas, my thought process, to the Planning Commission, and I would like input for anybody that's interested in looking more into fences and some of the things that are going on or not going on. So I encourage you to go ahead and send me anything, and I encourage any resident to either phone me or send me an email.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I have one quick thing, and it's about the schools, I'm putting a request out to the school superintendent or the school president, and come here if you need to at our next council meeting and do a five-minute presentation. I was out today quite a bit with doing the senior lunch delivery, and I get the same questions all the time, and I keep telling them I'm not the expert, I am not the one that owns that answer. They did put a little, well, I got an email that talked a little bit about it, but that was asking for my sponsorship of the lovely pets out there, I didn't want to say anything. The bottom line is, how, how would the money be used, how much additional will you get if it's passing? How much do you get now from the property tax increase? How much is received from MGM? How much is received from the state, from the lottery? The people are asking, they see all these incomes, they're trying to figure out, how much money are you getting? What's your budget say against the money coming in? And this last one that came out, most of them are very surprised, the only way they knew this was going on the ballot was the little flyer we got in our mailbox. They have no idea that issue 30 exists. So I'm asking to the schools and opening the request, I know you have information on here, you just placed it on the web, but to come here and give a five-minute, that's still before the, the actual vote, and you want to plead your case, because there's a lot of questions out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?